Good evening and welcome to this edition of In Focus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. I'm Eric Marsh, Executive Director of Whitewater Community Television. Glad you're able to join us for this edition of the In Focus Candidate Forum being made possible by Whitewater Community Television and our partners, the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, we will be speaking with candidates running for the Town Council in Fountain City, and we hope that you will join in. We'll put a number up in a while that you can send in questions. If you have questions for the gentlemen that are here, this is an interactive conversation. So if you're a resident of Fountain City or somebody who lives in the immediate area and wants to hear what they think about an issue, feel free. 973-8587 is the number. Of course, you can send us a tweet @WCTVinfo. The reason we are doing this, of course, election night is coming up, and that's going to be November 6th, but in the meantime, you need to do your part. You need to be registered to vote. So if you have not done that, voter registration is going on through October 9th, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 at the voter registration office in the Wayne County Courthouse, 301 East Main Street. You can go online to do that. IndianaVoters.gov is a place where you can get that information. You can check your registration. You can also register online if you'd like, and if you want to know who is actually running in all of the races, you can find that information also online. So IndianaVoter.gov if you want to do it online. If you want to do it in person, 301 East Main Street. Also, this is the second of what will be a long list of In Focus Candidate Forums that we are going to be having. We were here last week and mentioned that the deadline for school board was coming up. That happened last Friday, and in that last week, there were a rush of people who decided they wanted to be on a school board. So we have races in all of the five public school districts here in Wayne County. We'll start our conversation with potential school board members next week, next Thursday night with the Nettle Creek School Board. Follow that up on September 13th with the Western Wayne School Board. Follow that up on September 20th with the Richmond School Board. And yes, there are two school boards not mentioned there. We are still trying to schedule those. Two days before the end of the registration period, there were only two races. Now, there are multiple races in each one of the districts, and we're struggling to get them all in, but we will give you a chance to meet those folks and have a chance to talk with them. Tonight, as I mentioned, we are going to be speaking with candidates running for Town Council in Fountain City. Last week, when we spoke with the gentleman from Hagerstown, we didn't talk about party affiliation because both the gentlemen that were here and all three that are running in Hagerstown are all Republicans. That is not the case tonight, so we will mention first up that we have one Republican and two Democrats with us. There are four people running for two seats. We're going to give you a chance to meet those folks, and we're going to start here with Stephen Clark. Give you each about a minute, minute and a half to kind of introduce yourselves before we get into the Q and A. So we'll start with you.
I'm Stephen Clark, running for the Town Board of Fountain City. I was on the board 30-some years ago. Found it very enjoyable. We did a lot for the town. We listened to the people. Since then, I do run a business. I do know what it takes to run a business, and if you're sitting on the board, you better realize that you are running a business. You have people working for you, and it can get very interesting when all the people work together. And we get -- you've seen in some of our other TV programs that the sidewalks are a big issue. We've started replacing those. Like I said, we just started replacing them. So that's going to be an ongoing project. We've got water mains coming up. We've got an engineering firm for that, and it's going to get interesting this next summer, next two years. So hang on with us, and we'll get through it. Thank you.
All right. Next up, Cecil Mullins.
Hi, I'm Cecil Mullins. I've lived here practically all of my life, and I've just gotten on the Town Council in April. I was appointed. I'm a graphic artist. Really, that's just about it. It's all you need to know about me.
Okay. And Stephen Nestor.
Hi, my name is Steve Nestor. I've been a resident of Fountain City for over 20 years. I'm an alumni from IU East. I have a degree in Business Administration, and I'm running for the council because I think that we can take the council and help the people, and with the right people on the board, we can work together and help the town, not only with the sidewalks, with streets, with the park, with the water mains, and with the police department. And I think if we put the right people in place, we can make that town really great.
I mentioned that this is an interactive conversation. Again, you can call in a question, 973-8587. You can send a question via Facebook or via Twitter, @WCTVinfo. Our partners, the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce, are represented this evening by Bill Engel. Bill, glad to have you here.
Thank you, Eric. It's great to be here. It's always fun.
Been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while.
We're going to open the questioning with you, and we'll let Mr. Clark answer first, go around, and then we'll pick it up as we go.
Great. Okay. Well, I'll start with an easy one here. I live in Richmond, and as you know, Richmond's got a pretty major construction project downtown.
Yes, sir.
But we also have a problem with the major disruption of life, especially economic life, in our downtown district. Fountain City has a major water project in the works, and also, we'll be looking at a US-27 paving project, which I think is another major project. How do you, as a councilperson, work to make those projects happen without too much disruption of economic life and life in general? Or do you even have a role in that?
The construction firm that's going to do the work will be the major factor. Unfortunately, when you talk about water mains, we've got to tear the streets up or the sidewalks or wherever the mains are going to be at, and it's going to make it very difficult for some people to access their homes. The construction firm will help you. If you have a problem, you can call any of the board members or a police officer on the call, and they can work. We'll get you home, and we'll get you back to work the next morning. That should not be a big issue.
Okay. Great. Cecil, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, actually, I think one of the concerns we had was that actually, the construction for the water main and US-27 is occurring at the same time. Isn't that correct? And...
I have not heard anything about 27 yet. I know they're going to do some work on the bridges south of town, and they will close 27 at that point for a weekend, I'm thinking. I have not heard anything other than that.
Yeah, but other than that, the improvement as far as the water and things, if the people of the town knew what really went into the entire water process, the treatment and all of that, they would be amazed. This is going to be a nice change for the town.
In what way?
Well, just in true -- just in regard to as far as pressure and quality, quality water and things of that nature. I mean, some of the pipes, things we have now are just so old and outdated, and that's the big problem. There's a big problem with that.
Some of the pipes were put in in the '50s.
Wow.
And that's what we're looking at replacing.
Sure. There were -- I think if I'm not mistaken, there's even been reports of where some of our pipes, they've discovered pipes that were made of wood still, so that just tells you.
Okay. Yeah. Stephen, how about you?
I know that they're going to work on the bridges coming into 27. I'm not aware of the actual timeline for the streets, but, you know, we -- the board members would get advance notice of any construction, and it would be incumbent upon us to get that word out to the town, especially if they're working on a street, so we can make sure that that street is cleared, you know, vehicles, traffic, so, you know, it'd be safe for not only the pedestrians, but the workers. And we, as a Town Council, would have to work with everyone, the police department, our current street department, our water department, and we would have to coordinate with everyone to make sure that we do it in a way that we cannot, that we don't put undue stress on some of the town members. We have, in Fountain City, several elderly people that would, you know, not be able to get around as well at times, and we would have to work with them to make sure that, you know, when and if they have to come out of their home, that they can do so safely. And that would be something that we would have to take to task.
There are a couple of follow-ups, if I can. One, you mentioned reaching out to the community and letting them know what's going on. What are the ways that you all are planning right now to communicate with the residents in the community? You don't have a website, I think, that I'm aware of. I think the city has a Facebook page, but what are the ways that you're planning and putting into place right now? Because you're talking about some major disruptions. How do you plan on communicating with your residents what's being closed, what's being open, how long it's being closed? What's the plan? What's the process? And who's in charge of that?
I think at this point, the things that make sense, of course, we can use all the media we can possibly, but if we need to, we could provide mailers and mail to everybody's house, and I think that's probably the best route to do it. And then if somebody has any questions, of course, there'll be a phone number they can contact us.
Yeah, I would go with our Facebook page. We have a Town Facebook page. We have a police department Facebook page. We should utilize both. We should also utilize signage. You know, we should be able to put up a sign on the north and south end of town to help get the word out as they're coming home from work. We should put out mailers in advance. We, you know, we don't want to do that a week in advance. We want to give them a month because sometimes, you know, you may need to move your mom, you know, who's wheelchair-bound, to your home while that's happening on her street due to having to come out for, you know, medical appointments or, you know, just visitations. You know, so there's a lot of avenues. And as close-knit and small as our community is, we should be able to go door-to-door. We should, you know, spend some time, just walk around and talk to them and get the word out because, you know, not everyone gets on social media. Not everyone reads the newspaper. Not everyone, you know, reads signage. Not everyone, you know, talks to their neighbor on a regular basis. So, you know, if we spend, you know, a week, two weeks before and give them adequate notice, that would help them as citizens.
We also have -- there's great ideas, and we can also use the sign that we have out in front of the city building. Almost everybody at one point in time goes by there. Put a sign up at the post office, gas station, the two gas, the filling, the one gas station, the restaurant, and the two mechanical shops that we have in town. I think you'll know what's going to happen when. We'll make sure of that.
Another follow-up, and because we're talking infrastructure at this point, we got a question from a resident that came in that said, "The water and trash bill has seen sharp rate hikes over the past two years. Can you speak to why this is, and should residents expect that to continue?" We'll start with you. I know you only started in April, but you're also a resident there, so I assume if that's the case, you've seen those sharp increases, and I assume you've asked some questions yourself.
Oh, yes. It's one of those things where, of course, the rates, the people that we contract are trash and things through, their rates go up, and so, of course, when their rates go up, then we have to charge more, and that's really the simplest answer there is to that.
So the rate increases that they've seen right now have nothing to do with the infrastructure improvements that are coming up? The sewer, the water mains, things of that nature that you're talking about?
The sanitation is the trash pickup, and we do not have any control over the cost of that. The water bills are going up because we've just put in a new water tower. We doubled the size of the old one. That was a ton of money that the town spent to get that done. Now, we're looking at replacing all the mains because, like Cecil said, there's cast iron, there's wood pipes. You might be surprised what else is under the ground that we're shipping water through, and all that will be, everything will be replaced up to the meters. So it's going to cost money. We don't have the businesses like the city of Richmond. Hagerstown just did a big project. They paid for it, but they've got four times the business that we have in town to help support that. And when you're talking about a water bill for a homeowner that uses anywhere from 2,500 gallons and less, it's not going to, you're not going to see a big increase, but yes, it will increase. I'm one of them, so I've got to pay it too, and I'm on a, like everybody else, I'm on a limited budget, and it makes it hard. So bear with us.
Yeah, I agree with, you know, with the cost of Bestway is the service that we use with their costs increasing. We are now spending more as a town to pay for our trash being picked up than we are taking in through the current billing system that we use. So we have to offset that with the increase. Now, anybody that knows anything about government, we're not in the business of making money. We're not going to make a dime raising a bill to take and get rid of refuge and water. That money is turned back in. Any monies that are collected is then returned to the system via paying for their trash. And I am aware that if you do not accept the town trash pickup system, if you went by yourself, it would cost, you know, several times what you pay through the town. You know, we do give them a great, do them a great service because we negotiate a price with Bestway to do the town as a whole. And, you know, sadly, with the economy in the state it is, with everybody being quite busy, you know, where I work, we're really, really busy. You know, more people, more trash is being generated, and it creates a new cost for the business that we use to take away the trash. And we have to figure out a way to reasonably, you know, recoup that extra cost, and sadly, it's through raising, you know, your trash bill. And I live on Green Street, and I'll be paying it as well.
Will the water rates continue to go up with the water project that's going on right now, and will there be rate hikes continually for the next couple of years to cover the cost of that infrastructure improvement?
Unfortunately, yes. That's, we're going to see that. I can't explain it any other way, but if you want water, we've got to get our infrastructure up, and it will also, what they're looking at, too, is the water pressures throughout town will be a lot better. I know some towns at the north end got higher pressures than what they do at the south end, which doesn't make any sense, but the pipes are bigger. When they're done, all the pipes underground will be bigger. They don't, the fire department will not have to worry about, hey, this fire plug don't work because we ain't got no water. So that will all be taken care of. Like I said, they're in the process now of doing the engineering study, so it's probably going to be next year before we actually do any construction. Other than that, that's going to be part of it.
You're watching the In Focus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11, speaking with candidates running for Fountain City Town Council, Stephen Clark, Cecil Mullins, and Stephen Nestor. Bill Engel is representing the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce. I've jumped in with a couple of follow-ups.
Great to be here.
Let's have your next question.
All right. Having watched a few council meetings recently, some citizens say that you have crumbling sidewalks, and I think you've mentioned this, Stephen, that present a real hazard to citizens, especially the elderly. Now, I know you've debated it, and you're working on a plan, but part of the problem, as I understand it, is some of these sidewalks may get torn up during the water project. I know that's an issue, and it's a tough one, but how would you, as a councilman, address this problem, and it's immediately for citizens, particularly senior citizens?
I think we're around to Stephen opening this.
For me, I would make the decision to where we're going to be tearing up the sidewalks when we put in the new pipes. And any money or expenditures that we have currently to fix a sidewalk, we'll, you know, we will re-incur that when we do the pipes because they're going to tear that up to get to the, you know, the pipe. Short-term, I would encourage the homeowner to be patient unless it's a severe sidewalk. You know, a crack in the sidewalk, you know, is not a major need for a repair, but right across the street from my home is a missing section that's been there for better than two years that has not been replaced, you know? We just have to be patient. But I would also caution that, you know, Indiana has IC, has a code that would, that clearly states that any property abutting a sidewalk is responsible for that right away. So, you know, in the short term, you know, Fountain City doesn't have the adequate monies to fix every sidewalk right away. Indiana does have programs, and we need to aggressively try to find those programs. They have stuff that you can apply for on a yearly basis to help fix and repair the sidewalks and make them compatible or compliant. But with Carol V. Jobe, it's a ruling from the Indiana appellate court, 3rd District, if I'm not sure. I'm pretty sure that's it. It clearly states that the property owner that abuts the sidewalk would be responsible for that sidewalk. So if the property owner was, you know, highly upset that the town is not taking care of their sidewalk for, you know, a modest crack or what have you, you know, the state of Indiana has answered that question. It's not the town of Fountain City. Fountain City, you know, the town of Fountain City, we would love to take and put all-new sidewalks and, you know, all-new streets in and make, you know, do, but it takes money. And we're a small community of less than 800 citizens, and, you know, sadly, the state only gives us so much money a year that we can spend. We have to apply for grants and other monies, and without those, it would fall back on the homeowner to repair those in the short term. And that's a, you know, that was a ruling by the court, not Fountain City itself.
We had, we've replaced two really bad sidewalks. We had eight volunteers.
You've done that already. That's already occurred.
Donated their time, equipment, that teared up. The town paid for the forms to put it back, which we'll put up and we'll reuse them as the future rolls around. All the town paid for was, like I said, a couple hundred dollars for the forms and 10 yards of cement. So we're in the process of getting, we're going to maintain what we've got, and we've got a list made up of what we're going to replace. And if the water mains tear them up, that'll be under that section of the construction. They will get replaced. I know some people have said, well, that's just spending double money. In a way, it is, but in a way, it's not because we're only replacing sections. We're not going to replace from this corner to this corner. We're going to go in and patch what we feel like needs to be done now to maintain the safety of the citizens and the people that use the sidewalks.
Do you think that? Sure, yeah. I mean, when this subject first came to the board, one of the problems that was raised was that we did not have the funding to fix the sidewalks, basically. We didn't have enough money to pay a contractor to take care of them. And fortunately, finally, just somebody, you know, from Fountain City said, well, why don't we, if Fountain City won't buy the materials, we can do it ourselves? And that's what it came down to. So we've got a good group of people that stepped up to the plate and actually did that, so.
Which is what often happens in small towns like Fountain City. People step up. But Stephen, you mentioned that there's a list that's been established of what's the most important sidewalks to address. And I think I heard that in council meetings where people came forward. There was a business owner, and there was another person who was taking care of his mother, and I think she was in a wheelchair. So this list has been established by the city's street department or the town's street department?
By the street department, myself, Cecil. We drove around in a citizen's van and looked at every sidewalk in Fountain City. We made a list, and then the street department went through and prioritized. I know that we've got two that we're looking at. We're not going to replace them. We're going to patch them, especially with Fountain City Lions Festival coming up. And, yeah, that will eliminate the trip hazards, and then hopefully, that'll get us by for a year or so, and then we'll know more as time goes on where they're going to start replacing water mains. We don't know if they're going to start at the north end of town or the south end of town or in the center and go both ways. Don't have a clue. And it may be another six months before we know that. So we've got to maintain what we've got.
And I think that's what citizens were asking for. They didn't want to hear that this is going to happen in 2020 or 2021. They wanted, what I heard is they wanted something to happen this summer, which that's a pretty good achievement.
And it's money well-spent if it keeps me from falling because my knees are gone, and I don't want to fall. That cement's hard, and I don't care what anybody says.
You're watching the In Focus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. You see the numbers on the screen and a way to reach out to us. We do have a chat question, so if we can, got a couple of them actually lined up, so if we can get the first one up. "If you were elected, what will you do to clean up the town? There are abandoned homes, overgrown and poorly maintained properties that diminish property values of adjacent homes, and does not, and does nothing to promote the town as a welcoming place to live." So I think we're back around to Stephen starting? Stephen or Cecil?
We know that's a problem. We've got several. We've got to look at what we can do legally to get the property owner to maintain. I can bring this up, but it's kind of like Reed Hospital. Once people move out, they're gone, they're done. It is then owned by... owned by the property taxes. So there's, there's a fine line there of what we can do and what we can't do. And that's one thing we're, we're going to have to start looking into, because I know there's several properties that are, that need to be either tore down or get sold and get fixed back up.
Cecil?
We've also had some, like other responsible citizens, who've stepped forward and purchased properties as well, and with the intent to tear them down or, and rebuild, so.
Yeah, that was right across the street from me, Catechony. And, yeah, we've, we've got several homes, buildings, structures within the town limit that need to be looked at. And like Steve said, we have to go through it legally. You know, you just can't go in and bulldoze it down, because, you know, technically, we don't own it. So we, you have to take the proper steps. And as anybody knows, it can take a day or two to get that done. And that was me and funny.
Does the town have a planning board or something that is in charge of that type of thing, a planning or zoning board?
We have a zoning board. I think there's one member on it. The rest of them are town board members. We need to get a meeting set up and get, get started on this.
Is there also a process for either mowing properties that are substantially overgrown?
Yes, there is a town ordinance for that.
And/or boarding up buildings that are with broken windows and things like that?
I'm not sure about the boarding.
We'd have to go back and look.
Okay.
A couple of towns in Wayne County, including Richmond, which was very successful with it, has been able to use the blight elimination program that came through the state. Is that something that Fountain City has been able to take advantage of or is not able to take advantage of because of your size? Any?
Yeah, I think that's the case. It may have more to do with our size than anything else. We have a lot on our plate, just with the few people we have running the town as it is. So not to say that we're not, people weren't stepping up to the plate and doing their job. I think at this point, everybody that we have is doing a really good job, so.
I know we were backed up on a couple of chat questions, so we'll take the next one here before we kind of come back. With the Levi Coffin House interpretive center now open and functioning and bringing visitors to the community, what do you believe to be the opportunities for retail and restaurant business that can serve folks as well as the citizens of town? Other communities are doing it. Why can't we? Start with you?
Wow. Easy one. Well, you know, that is one of those subjects, I think, that all of us have been concerned about. We would love to have more businesses come into town and help Fountain City grow. I mean, we're excited about the whole Levi Coffin House, everything that has gone on there. Most of us have grown up with it and, you know, have embraced that. So if we could get more businesses to come into town, where we would put them and/or what we'd have to tear down, I don't know. But that would be a wonderful thing. And we welcome that completely. We wouldn't, I don't think we would discourage that by any means.
No.
No, I, I, I think that we would, we would be a great community for any business, restaurant. I would love to see an outdoor type restaurant, you know, with, with some picnic tables outside or, you know, an umbrella, so you can enjoy the day when there's a nice breeze in the evening and, you know, sit down with my wife and have a, have a sandwich or, you know, a hot beverage or a cold beverage, depending on the time of the year. I think it would be a great opportunity for any business to come into Fountain City. We have places right on Main Street that would, you know, be a nice place to put a business. 27, you know, gets a lot of, lot of, not only local traffic, but out of town traffic, you know, it's a state road. And, you know, if you put a business on 27, I think it would thrive. We just would have to work about, work around the logistics of, you know, making it safe, parking wise, and, and, you know, everything that we would need to do as a town to help them succeed.
Everything up 27, up and down 27 on both sides of the road is zoned for C1. So there are some empty houses for sale. If you want to run a business, get ahold of me, and we'll set you right up.
And your C1 zoning includes what in that area?
I was going to look that up, and I forgot to. Light, I think it's called light commercial. I know in the, in that zoning, we have a automotive repair shop, gas station, a restaurant, another automotive repair shop, funeral home. I think that's all we've got up 27 at the moment. So your ideas, bring them to the town board meeting, and we'll, we'll get with the zoning permit planner, and see what we can do for you.
With the conversation of the interpretive center coming in, was there a conversation among the town council as to how to potentially capitalize on the increase in visitor to that particular tourism spot? I mean, it was, it was written up, put in as one of the 10 best museums in the country or something along those lines? I mean, so there, there's been a lot of talk and a lot of publicity, even leading up to that. What was the planning process from a council standpoint like? Or what do you think the planning process for the council should be going forward to capitalize on those people that come into town?
I think we could possibly, I don't know, should we invite people? Would that work? I, I'm, I'm not really sure. Of course, I wasn't on the council at that time.
But even, even going forward, it's here, it's there. How do you, how do you, how do you build on that now?
Yeah. You, you make a very good point. And that's just something I think that we have to, we're going to have to sit down and strive for at this point in time.
Being a small, being a small community, you know, we're going to have to try to find ways to put, you know, the information out there that, you know, this would work in this community or, you know, come look at us. Because we have this here, there is this need for, you know, a, a sandwich shop or, you know, even a Dairy Queen, you know. I, I think, you know, a nice outdoorsy type area, stuff, store or shop, you know, where mom can take the kids after they go through the Levi Coffin Building for a quick bite would, would, would thrive in our community. You know, Friday nights after a football game, the pizza facility that we have in town is quite busy, you know. So I think that there is opportunities. And it's just, you've got to look at the, at the right, for the right opportunity, the right business proposition or, or prospective business owner, and work with them to bring in the business in a way that it is welcomed by the community. You know, you, pre-planning. You don't just show up and put it, you know, make, make the town aware before they get there so that, you know, they know it's coming and they can support it. You know, that's one of the good things about Fountain City. They, they do support their, their community. Even, even the elderly folks in Fountain City, they, they do support their town.
You're watching the Infocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. We're speaking with candidates for the Fountain City Town Council, Stephen Clark, Cecil Mullins, Stephen Nester, joined by Bill Engel, representing the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce. You get the next question.
All right. Thank you. Some people that, that I've heard describe Fountain City as a bedroom community. I guess I'm not sure I, I agree with that. But is, is it, what's your thoughts about should Fountain City grow? Should it not grow? Where is it at? Is it, is it going to be a suburb of Richmond? Is it, is it going to grow into the future? Cecil, any thoughts about?
Wow. You know, that's, that's a good question. You know, when I, I look at places like Cambridge City, and I look at Hagerstown, and I think, I call, I consider those places booming. I, I just love both of those towns. We would love to see town, see Fountain City become something like that, just to, just to grow a little bit, maybe, and of course, build a little bit more. And I, really, that's all I can say about that. I mean, how could you not want your town to progress and, and to become better?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I agree. We, we, we have a town that would love, I would love to see, you know, progress, grow, become bigger, more self-sustaining, you know, a grocery store come back to town so we don't have to drive to Richmond or Winchester or, you know, for, for groceries. At one time, we had that. We, you know, that business, we lost that business when it was sold. And I would love to see one of them come back into town. We, we do currently have a restaurant right on 27. I would love to see one on the other end, on the north side of 27. You know, they, there's a lot of, a lot of land up that way, you know. It's farmland right now. But I'd love to see it, it become bigger and, and, you know, put in some infrastructure and, and grow. And I, I would like to see another park on that, in the town, so that, you know, the, the kids and, and the families on the north side of town don't have to travel all the way down to the park that's on the south side of town. And with that said, I would love to see the town on the south side of town become more enriched and with activities for the children when they do visit the park.
I think with our new, hopefully with our new water system, that will help bring in new business. That has been a problem. I know when I was on board 30 years ago, that was, had been brought up. Same way with our sewer system. We need to look at upgrading it. And that's going to be another year or two. But we could, I think, the way it is right now, we can handle more than what they think that we can. I know we put the school, northeastern schools on our system, and that was a big money income to help us get our finances built up to be able to do more projects. So, yeah, there's, there's a lot of ground outline of the town. If you can get the farmers to sell it, that's great.
We've got a question that we got earlier this week from, from a resident, and I know we've got another chat question, so we'll go here and then to the chat question. There has been some vocal animosity between the council and the Fountain City police in the past. Can you speak to the status of that relationship at this point? And Stephen, I think we'll start with you on this.
I don't think there's animosity with the, the police department. I, I, I've been around for a while, and I've been through, you know, my wife is on the council presently. And she was, she, she came, became a member of the council via appointment. Somebody stepped down. And she worked, she worked through the process of losing a council member who resigned due to some law, legal issues. She lost two council members through deaths. And so she's, she's been through several, several rebuilding of the, of the town council. And, you know, Larry Street, when he was on, on the board, it, there was an issue brought up that, you know, there was an issue with the, with the town police officer. And I can tell you, I found it ludicrous at the time, because I heard nothing but support for the town police officer at that time. But, you know, I, I can say that, you know, there has been person, people, persons from the town who have expressed a need for accountability for the, for the Marshals Department. Currently, we have a residence issue with one of the, the deputy. You know, I'm aware of a Indiana code that requires any town police to be a resident of Indiana. This resident, this, this deputy at this time is not a resident in Indiana, so that's an issue that we have to address as a town. I'm not on the board, so, you know, all I can do is bring it up to my board members and say, you know, there is a code in the books that says, you know, you have, it states you have to, as a town police officer, you have to be a resident of Indiana. He is currently not. So we need to correct that. There is also another police officer, well, I, I, a reserve that has not been presented to the board for approval, that is currently practicing the profession of peacekeeping. I've got all the, all the minutes from the Fountain City Town Council from February to now and to, to, to August. And I watched WCTV to, to verify that it, he was not presented in August, and he was not. And he is working within the town. And, and those are the things that the, the members of, of the community are, are concerned about. You know, we want to, we want to be proud of, of our, our, our police department. We want to, you know, we want to work with our police department. But when you find out that these are happening and they're not being, you know, corrected or, you know, addressed quickly, you know, does that build confidence in your police department? And I can say that several people that I've spoken to have serious concerns on the accountability that's being given to our current police department. And it may be, it may be just sitting down and, and having a, a meeting with the police department, you know, and, and, and having an open discussion and saying, hey, you know, this is our concern. You know, they've never had a, you know, a community forum where they got to sit down and, and the police departments, you know, had to take, take, you know, questions or, you know, even write down questions or have people send in questions anonymously to get these, these answers. In order to garner trust from, you know, your elected officials, you want to be able, you know, you want to be able to address them. And, you know, if there's an issue, you want to be able to come to them. And-
We'll, we'll jump in. We'll let a couple of current board members kind of speak to this. And I know you weren't there in February, but you've been there for a while.
Yeah. I know some, some of the events that's taken place, maybe, I think maybe the one that they're talking about. I think, I think that's one of the things we got resolved. That was one of the problems we had with the hiring the deputy, I think it was, in living out of state, everything. But what I have had to come to believe is that the, are currently the officer we have in charge, and Tut, I think that he's, he's in charge of the, of the department, if you want to call it the department. He's in charge of the law enforcement in Fountain City. And it's his job to hire these people. And if he's comfortable, he knows what the limitations are. If they have to drive a certain distance, he's perfectly aware of that. And I just support his decision in regard to hiring these people. So I think he's got a good head on his shoulders. So I'm not really worried about that in regard to those things.
Okay.
We just did away with, excuse me, nobody on the board knew about the 15-mile radius. That was passed in 2016. I did do the, got, found all that. And according to the paperwork that I went through, Mr. Tut, Officer Tut, can hire and fire anybody under him. He does not have to go to the board to get approval. They must maintain their certification, state certification. They must work so many hours a year. It's not a whole lot. But they, you know, they need to be brought up to speed on what's going on. And I, I think Mr. Tut has done an excellent job.
You, you talk about training. I, I do believe there's a 20-hour minimum, a state required training.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct. Yes, that's correct. Is there a, a practice in place that guarantees or, or puts that?
They have to pass that training before Tutte can hire them. Yep.
And, and that's your statement, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One quick follow-up. You mentioned that your wife is president of the board right now. Are you running to replace her? Or if you win, would you both be on the board?
We would both be on the board. Her, her seat is not up for election. Currently, Steve Clark's and Cecil's are the two seats that are up, up for election this year. I do believe that Shane and my wife, Sue, and the clerks' seats will be up for election next year.
We have another chat question, so we want to try to get that in. We're down to our, our last few minutes here. It's no secret that the town board has been volatile for the past few years. What will you do to encourage more cohesive, civil and productive, a more cohesive, civil and productive board that will make the people of the town proud to say that you represent them? And I think we're back around to Stephen for a start.
If I'm re-elected, I'm going to do what I can to make the board work together. We need to work together. I would like to work with the EDC more to get businesses brought in. I'd like to work with the state getting grants. There is a sidewalk grant that we can get. And our problem is we're such a small town, limited financing. We cannot pay somebody at this time to write the grants. So we've got to figure out how to do that. And I know if you don't write a grant in a certain way, you're not going to get it. They're going to look at, nah, they don't want it, throw it out. Oh yeah, this guy here, they want it. Prove that one. And, because I've seen that, like I said, 30 years ago. So it's something that we all have to work together. And that's about all I can say at the moment.
Cecil?
Yeah. I think that in regard to those things, you know, I think that sometimes there's a problem with perception and things of that nature. I, and the thing that's interesting with, with being on the board, you do, you don't want all of the same kind of people on the boards. You want different kind of people, people who think differently. That's why you can see all points of views. And that's what makes it so colorful sometimes. And I really can't say that, I, I know we've, since I've been on the board, I've seen a couple of things that were, were very interesting that has occurred, but we worked through them perfectly fine. And, and you see that some people are a little, look at people a little bit differently and maybe, I don't know, with like, mm, little, with a little bit of an attitude here and there. But I think that's all going to, everybody's going to work past that.
Okay.
I, I would promote transparency. I, I think that if we were, we were more accessible and transparent with our community, they would garner more trust and understanding. I mean, if you, if you make everything available to them, our town ordinances, you know, we don't, unless you go up to the town building and ask, ask for, you know, an ordinance, there's no way for we, we as citizens to even see the town ordinances. If we could create a website, put them on there for everybody to see, then they would know what we're talking about. And then, and in that same regard, if, if an ordinance or a subject is, is being talked about in a town meeting, we, we would give them the whole subject of that, that meeting or what they're going to talk about. We don't just put, you know, deputy residence issue, you know, as a reason, as a subject, you know, for the agenda, put, you know, the, the actual town ordinance, what it says, and so that they know what we're, we're actually talking about up at, in, in a meeting. And then if they have a concern about that specific information, they can come and voice their concern. Transparency, you know, openness, availability would go a long way in garnering, garnering trust from the community. You just, you just have to work with the community each and every day. And like, like Cecil said, there, there's people who, you know, can be upset, frustrated. And, you know, frustration's a result of not, you know, a misunderstanding sometimes. You know, if you don't know, you, you become frustrated for lack of knowledge. So, you know, if you can help with the information and, and understanding, maybe you can work a little, you know, you can get by the, the animosity and work together. And that would be something that a small community could easily promote.
Okay. May I add to that? And I, I will say also, it seems like sometimes the only time some people pay any attention to what's happening during council meetings and things is when there's colorful things going on and not when there's, when it's peaceful and everything's running, running well. So...
I, I agree.
Stephen Nester, Cecil Mullins, and Stephen Clark. Thank you all very much for being here. We are out of time. Jesse Yandel is also running for one of the seats. There are four people running for two seats in Fountain City. So we want to remind you to get registered to vote for the general election. We ask you that you be a part of this process this year. Voter registration ends on Tuesday, October 9th, so you have between now and then. Don't wait till the last minute. Let's get it done. Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, 301 East Main Street. Also, you can go on indianavoters.gov for more information on that. Our InFocus Candidate Forums will continue next week as we begin talking with our school board candidates. The Nettle Creek School Board candidates will be up next week, followed by Western Wayne School Board and Richmond School Board. We will also be talking to candidates running for Indiana District 56, US District 6 congressional seat, District 27 state seat, and more. So keep joining us on Thursday evenings at 6:00 p.m. for the InFocus Candidate Forums. Want to remind you that Monday is Labor Day, so the WCTV studios will be closing at 3:00 p.m. this Friday. We'll reopen on Tuesday at 8:30. A couple of quick things to remind you of happening in the community. There was a new date put out for Observing the Stars. That's going to be taking place on August 31st now, from 9:00 to 12:00, Middle Fork Reservoir Park. Definitely get out and enjoy that. The Richmond Symphony Orchestra is providing brass on the grass this Sunday, September 2nd at 5:30. That is at Forest Hills Country Club. Bill Engel, thank you very much for sitting in and joining us for this InFocus Candidate Forum. We appreciate it.
Enjoyed it very much.
Don't forget, audio of this program can be also heard on WKBV and G101.3, 6:00 a.m. on Sunday morning. So join us for that. And join us next Thursday night for another InFocus Candidate Forum here on WGTV, Channel 11. Have a great weekend.